Midlothian, hi, I'm Tim and I am here with Ed Gardner. He is running for place five, Midlothian City Council. He's the incumbent and he's looking to get your vote. Ed, why don't you take a second and introduce yourself?
I'm in Midlothian, for those that don't know me, I have been in town here for about 20 years. My wife is the eye doctor at Walmart, has been since Walmart opened. I've got two beautiful daughters that will both be attending MHS next year that were born here. I grew up through high school in Eagle Point, Oregon, little small logging town out in the middle of nowhere. Joined the Navy. After I got out of the Navy, I came to Houston and went to University of Houston where I met my wife. And I've been a Texan ever since, so you know, that spent 11, 12 years in Houston and then came up here for the last 20.
Weren't born here, but got here as quickly as you can.
Got here as quickly as I can and I'm not going anywhere, so. You know, I spent a lot of my time working in corporate America as a IT security person. You know, started out on the on the front lines and worked my way up into management and ended up in consulting and compliance where I got to travel all over the world and consult with some of the largest companies in the world and give them guidance on how best to operate and to succeed. So, you know, it was a wonderful job, but it took me away from here. I was gone all the time and I wanted to be, I wanted to be here. I wanted to be in Midlothian and ended up starting a small business, which I still have to this day. And now I have a lot more time. Since I had that time, I decided to get into politics and see what I could do for the community. But that's it. I mean, really, there's not much else to say other than that.
Well, we appreciate your willingness to serve, honestly. So, thank you for that. So, how long ago, I know you're, 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 so for the people that don't know, you were elected to fulfill the last year of Justin Kaufman's term as he left his spot on place five to take over, yeah, to run for mayor. He was unopposed, so you know, we knew he was going to be the mayor. And so you are, you are a year in at this point, finishing a term.
Almost a year.
Almost a year, yeah, yeah. And so you're the incumbent and you have some experience doing the job. Go back, and that wasn't the first time you ran either. So, go back before you actually ran for city council. When, how long ago did you decide that this might be for you? Or when did you decide to run for city council?
Well, I've always said I've lived in Midlothian, but the truth was I lived in the ETJ of Midlothian for a long time. Once I was annexed is when I started to seriously look at running for office.
Forcefully annexed.
Forcefully.
Against your will.
Against my will, but you know, and since, since my tax dollars are going to the city, I wanted to be able to influence how those are spent and, and how those are collected and to be able to be a voice for my neighbors out there as well as, you know, all the, the people in Midlothian that, that feel like they don't have a voice, so.
Okay, so can you give me an idea of maybe the top three reasons that, that you're currently running? You've been in there for a year now. You know, what, what is on the, on the top of the list of why you're running again?
Number one is taxes. I mean, everyone you speak to, your taxes are oppressive in this town. And you know, a lot of that is due to how wonderful this town is and, and how enticing it is. So, we've built a lot more, property values have gone up. But you take somebody in my shoes, you know, I bought a house 20 years ago on a fixed mortgage. You know, 20 years later, I'm still paying that same mortgage and my tax bill is now higher than the mortgage bill. So, I went from buying my property from the bank to now renting it from the city. And I will continue to have to rent it for the city for as long as I live here. So, it's, it's hard when you're, when you're spending more on taxes than you are on actually buying the house. And you know, I talked to a lot of people who, that's a, that's a, a bridge too far for them and they end up leaving this town, selling their house, taking that, you know, cashing in on that higher value, but they have to leave. And that's, that's sad, you know, we shouldn't ever, you know, put our citizens in a position of, you know, contributing to a community that then essentially prices them out of living in it.
So, yeah, okay, well, so.
That was one, sorry.
Oh, yeah, yeah, okay, that is three, yep, yep, go ahead.
The other, the other two things is, you know, are, we have this challenge of growth. It's a, it's an enormous challenge and we're running out of developable land. And you know, we have an issue with how we zone and how we work with that property right now. You know, we have a pretty good comprehensive plan that looks at, you know, where we want certain things, where we want commercial, where we want, you know, housing developments. But so far, we haven't really stuck to the plan. You know, every time a new development comes, it ends up under a new degree, a new agreement that determines, you know, what that particular community, I mean, you know, you and I have had a discussion about how that personally affected you, you know. It, it happens to a lot of the residents where, you know, there's certain rules that are agreed to during these developments and it makes it really hard for code enforcement across the city because each community has its own code essentially as to what's acceptable and what's not. We don't have the continuity and it makes it hard on, on people that want to build on their property or, or improve their homes or new developers that are coming in to even know what it is that the city wants. And so we need, I want to work to get that under control and make it a lot more friendly for the residents and for people that are trying to, to work with the city. And you know, that leads into, you know, the third thing, which is, you know, we have a government that's grown. We've gone from, you know, I think 5,000, 6,000 residents when I moved here to 45,000 with over 100 in the, in the school, 100,000 in the school district. And there's still, there's process and procedures, you know, I look at it from my consulting, you know, viewpoint of walking in and, and looking for the things that are working and trying to, to, you know, use those in a wider, in a wider audience and look for the things that aren't working so well and fix those. And I see there's, there's a lot of places where we can improve our process and procedures, improve the government and how it interacts with the people and makes it easier on the citizens that are dealing with the government. And that's something I really want to work with. I mean, there's several families I've talked to that have had just horrible time in trying to work through some of their problems and we can do better. So, you know, those, those are my three, three top items.
Okay, well, great. So, you know, knowing that you were only getting a one-year term out of the deal despite having to go through the same election, election, you know, burden that, you know, other people get three years out of, you know, which by the way, makes me appreciate you even more. You know, that somebody's willing to do that for such a short term. Now that you've been there a year, you know, is there anything that's on like a short-term to-do list that you really want to prioritize going into a three-year term? And if there is, do you feel like being one of seven, that you'll have, you know, good support from your other council members?
Yeah, I mean, going back to taxes, you know, that's, when I walked in the door, the first thing we hit was budget season and it was just, you know, drinking from a fire hose, not knowing what, what I, I, what, not knowing what I didn't know. You know, I really had a hard time challenging the, what was presented. So, you know, going forward, I think I can look at and react to, you know, what the asks are a little differently. You know, a lot of people in the community have been calling for a no new revenue rate, you know, which, you know, for, for those that don't know, a no new revenue rate fully funds the government. It funds everything that was in place last year. You know, takes care of the debts, takes care of all the maintenance and operation. It takes care of everything that you had. Plus, it allows for growth based on the amount of new rooftops that you have coming in. So, that new, no, new, no new revenue rate is considerably less than what we're at right now. And in fact, we're at the opposite end of the scale. We are just below the amount where we would have had to go to the taxpayers and ask them. I mean, we're talking a point, I think, point two, oh, point 02% under what we would have had to go to the taxpayers and, and put on the ballot in order to allow that tax rate because it's so high. And so I think, you know, now that I know what I, what I didn't know then, I'll have a much better time at reining some of that, that taxing coming in. We could have fully funded every single request that the staff had for budget. Everything, every personnel issue, every new project, every, you know, repair to the roads that, that we had planned at a rate that was considerably less than where we ended up. And, and that's very frustrating to me because we ended up having to take out a bond and borrow money to increase our debt obligation just to be able to hold the tax rate at what we did. And that to me was extremely frustrating. And it's something that, you know, I think that I'll have a much better chance in, in getting right to the, the point of dealing with. You know, so that's, that's my primary thing out of the, out of the chute, so to speak. But you know, there's, there's a lot of other issues that I want to tackle. You know, again, it goes back to process and procedures and things like that.
Okay, so a little bit earlier, you brought up the, the, the G word, growth. So, what are your thoughts on the growth that's happening? How you'd like it to be handled? Your thoughts on how we've handled it so far?
Well, you know, growth is inevitable, you know, it's unfortunately, we, we can't ever rewind and go back to the days when we had, you know, the one-lane wooden bridges and, and covered, you know, tree-covered streets and, you know, going and sitting at the non-smoking section at DT's.
Was there a non-smoke, I mean, when you really get down to it, was there a non-smoking section to DT's?
No, but I mean, those, those are the things, you know, those, that really small town feel. When I came here, you know, half of the, the downtown, you know, literal strip downtown where, well, I can't say Campesanos anymore because they're gone, they couldn't afford the rent anymore. But a lot of these businesses are, those were empty buildings when I moved here. I mean, nobody even wanted them. And you know, so I've watched it go from, you know, really kind of a stagnant and almost dying downtown to a thriving community and it's growing and it's growing. And, and you're continuing to see Fort, you know, Fort Worth and Dallas come south. And it's gonna, we're gonna be fully built out. And on top of that, we're going to have the muds at, you know, on the south side of town, which are going to be essentially doubling the size of the city. So, this growth is something that it's absolutely here and we have to have a better plan on how to deal with it, especially with the muds to, you know, we have to look at what we're doing to be able to survive that influx. Aside from that, you know, I think that we need to control the type of growth. In other words, you know, through, the one thing that we get to do on the council is we get to decide, you know, essentially where things go. And we, we do get to do some zoning, you know, we have to be careful not to, to impact people's values on their properties by, by zoning. But what we can do is we can say, you know, this is a great spot for commercial. This is a, this is a good spot to put schools. This is a good spot to do, you know, our elderly communities that are a little, you know, closer together and these are great for those, you know, one to two acre homesteads. And we need to get better at defining that and sticking to that once we've defined it. So, when it comes to growth, I think that we really need to, to, you know, kind of grab that bull by the horns and define it a little better as to what, what we want, where we want it and to set up the rules and conditions under which we want it and make them more clear.
Okay, okay. So, with growth comes, you know, bigger city problems or, you know, different things like that. So, I'm just going to kind of list off a couple of things and if you'll give me your thoughts on them, I'd appreciate that.
Okay.
As you know, and as you were a part of approving this, do you have, what are your thoughts on the new Weber development? Now, a lot of people know that this is at least the second Weber development, the first one being the Kroger Shopping Center. And so what we're talking about now is what a lot of people would refer to as the Lowe's Shopping Center going in across the street from Walmart.
So, while I was part of the process, I did vote against it. I'm not sure if I, I think I might have been the lone holdout.
I believe it was five to two, but.
It might have been, yeah.
Somebody will correct me if I'm wrong.
I'm not sure who else voted against it, but I, I know I did. And one of my, the main reason I voted against it was because of the fact that they're building at the parking lot across the pipeline. And you know, we've seen, we've, our, our memory has kind of forgotten some of the pipeline incidents that we've seen in the past where there was major explosions on these pipelines, where we had, you know, traffic, a lot of increased traffic over old, old pipeline and it tends to weaken it over time, you know, settling of the earth due to the traffic. And that kind of worries me. I don't want to see our residents getting into harm. And that, that's my primary goal when I look at these developments is how do we protect the community from the development? You know, what, how, is this development going to harm its neighbors? Is it, are you going to put up a glass building that reflects sunlight down and, and, you know, burns out a person's house, you know? You know, what are we doing to protect the people that are already here from, from what's coming? You know, is, one of the concerns I had is a recent, you know, thing that's up with the new hotels that are, that are inevitably going to come out there by the hospital. And that is, are they going to cause flooding for the, the neighborhoods nearby that are already flooding? That we're already having problems with? You know, when you pave over everything, where does that water go? You know, those are the concerns that, that, that I have most because I can't tell somebody what color brick to put on their building. That's, that's not, that's not my business to tell. I can't tell people to build a hotel. I can't tell them to, to not put in another chicken restaurant. You know, that, those decisions I don't get to make and we as a council should not be making. You know, we're there to, to make sure that the infrastructure, you know, if you're putting in a, a drive-through restaurant, make sure that that drive-through is not going to pose a safety issue for the other cars that are going around. You know, if there's parking, is, is the parking safe for, for the pedestrians? Those are the things that we need to be looking at is to, to, can we create a safe environment that's going to be, you know, friendly to everyone around it? Because it's a free market, it's a free country. You know, I would love to be able to just be, okay, well, that goes there, this goes, but I can't do that. That's not my business. And it's, and as one of seven, you know, I can just put my input in on some of these decisions. But I, I don't, I don't get to control it. Now, Weber, the Weber Development at Kroger, they did a nice job. I mean, I personally boycotted it when the, when the Kroger went in for a couple of years without going to Kroger because I, I was so upset that they were, you know, basically taking customers away from Brookshires. I, I gotta admit, I've shopped there a few times. You know, I still go to Brookshires though, I'm, you know, I go to, I go to Ace Hardware instead of Lowe's. But you know, I try to, I try to stick with the, you know, dance with the one that brought us, so to speak.
Sure.
But the Weber Group didn't do a bad job. It's a nice-looking development. It's well laid out. They brought in some, some pretty decent stuff, some stuff I, I probably wouldn't have brought in, but. And I, I think that at the end of the day, the Lowe's is going to be helpful. I think a lot of people will like it. I think it'll bring in a lot of tax revenue that might, God, God help us, lower our, our need for our citizens to pay taxes. But you know, we'll see, you know, these developments are going to come.
Okay, so speaking of development, how about the development of downtown? How it's going, what your thoughts on locating the city hall downtown is, that sort of thing?
That's a tough one for me. You know, I, I'm not a big fan of the big city hall. I think we went overboard on it. I think it's a little much. That's my personal opinion. I'm not as hard against the public safety, you know, building because, you know, I, I think that the, the core responsibility of government is to provide for public safety and to provide infrastructure. And you know, so when it comes to roads and all that, you know, I think if it comes to police and fire and EMS, you know, I think we need to, that's where our money needs to be going to make sure that we can take care of the citizens. When it comes to building a great big city hall where we're going to have more, you know, bureaucracy, because it's that old thing, you know, when you have more pockets, you put more stuff in it. You build a bigger building, you gotta hire more people to fill it. I'm not crazy about that, you know, I, so as far as what it's going to do for downtown, I don't know. We'll see. We'll see what it brings. You know, there's a, there's a push to tear down the, the current city hall and put a park there to make it, you know, to spruce up the, the new city hall. I'm not a big fan of that either. I think that we've got a, a valid, you know, usable structure that we could use for the community, you know, put in the community center or, you know, a, a maker space for the community, something that we could do that, that helps improve, you know, quality of life rather than just some grass, you know. But I don't know, we'll see what happens. You know, the, the development downtown's been good so far in the sense that it's come a long way since I moved here. It's a lot more enjoyable to go down and mill around downtown than it was when I first moved here, so.
There's definitely more to do.
There is.
So, what are your thoughts, and I don't know if you've seen these or not, there have been some CBS News stories about the police department. Do you have any thoughts on that?
I don't like the way it ended up going to the news. You know, there was a, a report that was drafted by the council or that the council had commissioned that was given to the press without permission. And I don't, you know, we, we don't know who did it. And you know, when it comes to transparency, I'm all about it. But unfortunately, when it went out, there was people's names and things like that in it. So, it really kind of bothered me that, you know, it was, it wasn't done in a way that was respectful to the, the people that were involved in the situation. As far as what it addressed, that goes back to the core of what, what I've been talking about, which is, you know, there were definite deficiencies found and not with the particular case that was mentioned because it didn't look at the case. It looked at just how we go about governing, you know, and administering our, the city. And what it looked at was one department within the, within the, the police department, you know, one section of it. And it said, you know, how are they doing their daily job? You know, is it, is there anything wrong with it? Is there any, are they doing everything right? And it came back saying, we had a lot of room to grow. We had a lot of things to fix. But that's what happens when you start out with a real small agency or a small city and you grow it is that unless you are continually doing process improvement and driving in, you know, a, a really thorough process throughout the whole department, some things get left behind and they, they, they get overlooked and you end up having issues. And that's, I think that if we did a similar report throughout the city, we'd find a lot more of that. I think that there's a lot of places to improve and I think it's something that, you know, I, I can pledge right now that if I, if I get reelected, I will be working with the city manager to try to find those issues and, and get them corrected. And you know, there was nothing that was malicious in it from the staff. You know, it's not like we had people that were deliberately trying to do things wrong. It's just that change over time can be messy. And unfortunately, if you, if you're not staying on top of it, yeah, that's where you end up.
Okay, well, one last topic that I'd like to get your thoughts on and I'm sure, I'm sure you'll be interested to speak about this is the recent sanctuary city legislation.
So, I've had, you know, I had a, for, for, for those that don't know, sanctuary city ordinance was a sanctuary city for the unborn. And what it provided for was a mechanism to basically promote life by keeping abortion clinics out of Midlothian, keeping abortion providers out of Midlothian. It doesn't say, you know, what people can do outside of town. It doesn't say, you know, if somebody wanted to go to another city or another state and get an abortion, you're fine with that. What, what it states is you can't do it here. I personally believe that life begins at conception. I think that we have a constitutional obligation to provide for life, liberty and the pursuit of happiness. You can't have anything if you don't start with life. And if you're, you're preventing, you know, if you're preventing somebody from being born, you're, you're violating their constitutional rights. And you know, so personally, it was extremely important to me. I pushed this very hard. You know, I, I tried, I worked with others in the city. You know, Hugh Reynolds, who's a wonderful man, works for First Look, which is, you know, that provides sonograms for expectant mothers and counseling and support for mothers. I mean, just incredible organization.
Located in Waukesha.
Located in Waukesha, he's a Midlothian resident. I worked with him to get it on the ballot the first time and it failed, unfortunately. But I, knowing that I might be out, I brought it back up and worked with my peers to get it passed. And we did, you know, and it's something that, you know, when it was brought up the first time, everybody's like, oh, the city's going to burn, it's going to be horrible, people are going to be so mad. Truth is, 99% of the people that I talk to love it. They're happy with it. It's a good thing because just because right now Roe versus Wade is, is not the law of the land, we have challenges all over that are, are going to be putting abortion back on the ballot. And it's something that at least we have control of here and it gives us the ability to essentially safeguard our community against that, that influence. You know, I just, it was something I was very passionate about and, you know, I, I was the one who sponsored it and got the support for it and put it on. So, if you hate it, vote against me. Take me off the ballot because, you know, that's something that I'm, I will not turn around on. I will support life going forward and I believe in. And ultimately, all the people that were worried about what it would do to our, you know, tearing our community apart, it was unfounded. You know, we, it, it has been a positive thing. And I think that going forward, we're going to see a better community for it.
Great, okay. Well, as we wrap up here, I, I wanted to first say thank you very much for taking the initiative to run for public office and to step up and devote your own time and sacrifice to offer to lead the city as one of seven. I appreciate you sitting down with me and taking your time to, you know, tell people from the horse's mouth, so to speak, exactly, you know, who, who you want them to vote for. So, why don't you take a moment and address the citizens directly and solicit their vote?
Okay, this is, this is the part where I beg for votes. But in all seriousness, you know, I, I don't do this for myself. I don't have, you know, a business here that, that has benefit from my being in office. I don't have any kind of skin in the game, so to speak. I, I literally do this job for you and for my children. I want to make sure that this community is a place where they're going to want to stay and, and raise their kids and where they can afford to. So, if you're concerned about, you know, your high taxes, if you're concerned about the growth, if you're concerned with a city that listens, having a city that listens to you and works for you, then vote for me because that's who I am. I'm here to support the citizens of Midlothian and to be their voice, you know, and I can't do it without you. You know, we have very low turnout, you know, typically we have less than 10% of the population shows up at the polls. I need you to come out and vote, so hope to see you out there. Early voting starts on Monday, goes through the 30th and then Election Day is May 4th. So, so please, Midlothian, come out to the polls, you know, come out to the polls regardless of whether or not you're coming to vote for me. Just get involved, be part of the process, make your voice heard.
Well, Ed, thanks again. Midlothian, thanks for taking the time to watch this video. Early voting starts on Monday, April 22nd. Election Day is May 4th. Please take the time to educate yourself about the issues and the candidates. Please understand what is at stake for the city. And remember, voting informed is virtuous, so stay classy.